...past, and it was not very successful. Additionally, the MTA is under a lot of financial struggles right now, and they're under a lot of pressure. A lot of, most of their focus is on the subways in New York City. The reports that have come up, there have not been a lot of discussion about improvements on the Port Juris line, except for turnarounds and side yards. There has not been a lot, if any, discussion on additional stations right now, so I'm not sure that that would even be entertained in their capital plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken? Elkie, you want to come back up?
Sorry. Elkie Rickert, again. I knew I forgot a couple of things. I did want to ask a question. Who does the mail for Woodbury Common currently? Is that serviced by Central Valley?
Central Valley goes in there, and they have a whole line of mailboxes, and they just deliver down there.
So with additional growth of stores, would be additional mail assumed?
We can look into that.
Plausible. And so with that, I don't know that our current post office can accommodate that kind of growth, to be perfectly honest. I also wanted to question if there was a plan for deliveries and commercial trucks that come in and out of Woodbury Common. With increased traffic in general, will there be limited hours on when Woodbury Common would be accepting deliveries and trucks? They had just, they had shopper hours, and then they had delivery hours, that deliveries only, you know, after X amount of time or whatever. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, recently, this came up, and so I'm just going to kind of reference where it's from. This is from DailyVoice.com, who citing FBI data from 2017, NewYorkUpstate.com ranked the 30 most dangerous cities and towns with populations greater than 5,000 residents by aggregating crime counts in each locale. So apparently, Woodbury ranked in this FBI data as one of the most dangerous towns. For those of us who live here, that is a laughable statement, because it's a very safe area. Now, I don't have the specific data on case-by-case information by any means, but the general consensus of the public who lives here in Woodbury assumes that it's those property crimes, shoplifting and whatnot, that are generated from Woodbury Common. So our town is now ranked 23rd as being, for crimes. We're on a rank list, as terms of being dangerous. So while Woodbury Common does bring economic revenue, what does that do for residents and our property values, and attracting new people to move into the area, when they look and they want to look for a safe community, and they say, oh, well, Woodbury has this high crime rate, which it's probably only really related to the mall, to Woodbury Common, and not really related to those of us who live here? So I wanted to address that concern and see in what ways they planned on providing us with some kind of protection from their statistics that affect our properties. And that's it for now, until I remember something else.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room who would like to speak on this? With no one coming forward, board members, what's your pleasure about the scoping meeting? Are we going to motion to close it?
I actually have a procedural motion.
Go ahead.
If it was the board's pleasure to allow public comment for whatever set amount of days, would, Rick, the public, written, written comment, sorry, written comment for a set number of days. I know we're under a time strength to get this, you know, moving forward. Would we be able to have a special meeting of this board just to discuss the draft document so we could still be within that timeline?
Yes.
All right, before I close the meeting then, or ask for a motion, does the board members want to entertain having written comment? But before I do that, I know May 1st, you said 60 days.
Correct.
But Natalie, you mentioned our June meeting, our second meeting.
Right, June 19th.
And July 4th, I think, is on a Wednesday?
July 3rd is on a Wednesday.
July 3rd is on a Wednesday. So we're looking at maybe 62 days, 63 days?
Yeah.
Can the applicant give us wiggle room on that, or not? Or is it set 60? And that's the other thing, is will we be having a quorum for July 3rd? I'm throwing a lot of questions out there, I'm sorry, but we'll all have to come together on this.
I think, I think maybe a better way to look at it, Maria, is this, this board needs to give direction to Woodbury Common, that your scope must be changed in the following ways, all right? We can't just throw everything and say, well, there's a lot of comments, and you decide how to change the scope, all right? You need to direct that. So I think, given the comments that you've had, that it probably makes sense for the board to go ahead and have some time to go ahead and digest it, and be able to coalesce their comments to say, I want the scope changed in this way, that way, and the following ways. Just as a, for instance, the, there was talk about the cumulative impact of other surrounding projects that may be underway. If there are specific projects, then you should be identifying that, so you make sure that those projects are actually studied. So, and there were some other comments that were brought up. And so I think that it, in scheduling, you should decide, well, you know, I can get the transcript, because I didn't imagine that everybody took copious notes. I can get the transcript by X date. I then would have, whatever you think is appropriate, seven days, 10 days, to read that, because it's not a very extensive transcript, and with my own notes, decide what I want included in the scope. And then if that can be done in accordance with your normal process, and still get the 60-day turnaround, I think that's the appropriate time. And within that time, you also would set a time for receiving written comments, if that's what you wanted to do. So I think there's enough, there's, you have two more meetings, right? So if you were able to, by your next meeting, come up with your comments as to what you wanted, and then they came back by the 19th with a redline copy of how they've changed the scope based upon your comments, I would see that you'd be able to go ahead and approve it on the 19th, and be able to stay within the 60 days. If you wanted to have a special meeting, you could also have a special meeting either before or after that time. So I, I'm not sure that we need to go further, but it's up to the board.
I want to propose a motion that we have written comments submitted to the village, date-stamped, submitted hand-stamped by May 31st, Friday by 4:00 p.m., would be submitted to the village, and date stamped by the 31st, which would, the mail we would, we would get by the 3rd or the 4th. And then we would have to turn that around quickly.
Maria?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that you have a much shorter time for that, because you would want to review those comments to decide which ones, by the 5th, that you would want to possibly have them incorporate. I think a week's time, it's, even in a DEIS, in which it involves much more data, et cetera, it's 10 days. So I think seven days on a scope would be more than reasonable.
So the 29th?
No, the 30th, because there's, everything's closed on the 27th. You got Memorial Day, so I'm not quite off on the 31st. You got people going away on vacation, probably Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, because Monro Woodbury has no school this Friday, so I'm sure people are going to take advantage of the four-day weekend. That's why I said it'd be either 30th or the 31st, because we've got a short timeframe there, because of the holiday. If someone wants me to change it to another date, let me know, because the 29th, I'm not giving the residents their fair chance to submit anything. I'll go with the 30th, and I'll come in between the two days.
I would say the 30th is plenty of time.
All right, so we're going to have it hand-stamped to the village by 4:00 p.m. on the 30th, the 30th, and stamped by the post office by the 30th. Is that what I'm going with? That's my motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll have to get, Natalie, if you can get to Maria to put that on Channel 22, and to post it on the village website as well?
Yes.
That, written comments, hand-delivered by the 30th, by 4:00 p.m., Village Hall, and hand postal stamped by the 30th, which means whatever they, whatever the village gets by the 30th, they can turn that around right away to Woodbury Common, and then anything that would come in post, possibly in the mail by the 3rd of June, and it gives Woodbury Common time to review that. Is that a, you can come up to the microphone. We would get that, as soon as Woodbury Common would get it, I'd have to have Jessica probably would turn it around with Maria, we would get it that Friday morning.
So we get the 31st.
Anything that's handed in directly to Village Hall, we can request that we get, the board gets it by the 31st. But anything that's mailed, we won't get in until the mail is delivered. Now, that is a motion that we voted on, but I'm going to have...
I don't think there was a vote yet.
Yeah, I just, I just have one quick question for Rick. If we receive comments you had mentioned on the 3rd of June?
If they were mailed in.
If they were mailed in.
If by the 31st, which is the Friday morning, because we say 4:00, everyone leaves at 4:00.
Understood.
Well, Jessica's here till, I think till 5:00, I'm not sure the timeframe, but the building department closes at 4:00. So you would either get it after 4:00 on the 30th, or first thing Friday morning by, I would ask them by 9:00, no later than that.
Okay.
Hand-delivered. Anything that's mailed in, you probably wouldn't get until that Monday, the 3rd.
And just so, we're all on the same page, you had mentioned that the board would review those comments and provide feedback to us.
Directions to you as to, they'll have that within, within their knowledge. But what's going to rule this is whatever comments the board, given the comments that were said tonight, given the comments that are mailed in, it's what this board believes should be included in the scope. And so they will have to have a transcript of this as soon as possible, I don't know when that's going to happen, so that we can get the board the transcript, so that they can review this, along with their own notes, to determine, hopefully by the 5th, for direction to you as to what should be included in the scope.
And in terms of getting those comments from the board at that point, what is the timeframe that we would have to have the updated scoping document to be heard on June 13th, June 19th?
What I would suggest, it's up to the board, but what I would suggest is that you would have to submit it to the board by the 12th, and then the board would, since it's a redline document, you can go through a redline document pretty quickly. And then they would determine if you properly incorporated the things that they directed you to do, and then they can make a decision on the 19th. If there is still anything that's outstanding, there'd still be a little bit of time for having a special meeting, if you could get a quorum to do that.
So Rick, just, so it's clear, here it is.
Didn't know where that was coming from.
Right, in the wall. When is the board actually then going to give direction to the applicant? Because they have not only the comments from here and the memos, which had some things that you really have to discuss, I think. I mean, like the alternatives and the projects to be included in the traffic and so on, that's going to...
The board has not made our comments yet tonight.
Right.
So we have, we still have to go through the board's comments right now.
Okay.
Chris, I'm just going to, and to your, I can also have Natalie request that Maria, the building department, reserve this room for the 26th of June, have an extra date, just in case, because we may need to have that. Board members, are you available for the 26th?
Aye.
Of June? I should be.
Yes.
I'm, I'm still in town. Yeah, I'll be in town. You're good? So Natalie, can you also request Maria to reserve this room for June 26th? And would it be wise, Rick, if she, should we make a motion to have a special meeting?
Yes.
We should do it now, right?
Yeah, you should do it now.
Okay.
I mean, you don't have to, you could do it on the 5th, but if you wanted to set it up, you could set it up now. If you don't need that meeting, you can also always cancel it.
Right. Well, do you want to make that motion, Chris? You want me to do it?
We have no motion pending for the Rick comment, so let's get that through.
Why? I thought we all said yes to that, because I wrote for yes.
No, it wasn't called.
We did, didn't we?
I didn't think so.
Hold, timeout. Gail, did I, do we all pass them, we all voted on that? We all said yes. If you want me to...
That's right.
So we did vote on it.
I obviously didn't hear it.
I know I'm getting old, but, all right, so we said yes to that, and we got that timeframe. All right, so I'm going to offer a motion that we schedule a special meeting for June Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's also pending that we have confirmation from Maria for the room. And we can always adjust that at the June 5th meeting. All right, so we just did two motions. Okay, board members, I guess we need to go over some things on here. One thing I want to get cleared up, because I have three different documents here now. I have Dennis's H2M memo on page 2 regarding page 3, of the involved and interested agencies. In the positive declaration, is it the positive declaration? Hold on. I have three different lists going, and I want to be very clear who we're doing. If I go off the scoping document on page 3, involved agencies, the Village of Woodbury Zoning Board, Village of Woodbury Architectural Review Board, New York State Department of Transportation, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Orange County Department of Health. So we're going to move down Orange County Planning Department and Orange County Department of Public Works into interested agencies. You got me, Jennifer?
So the first two, and also there was mention of the FAA as well.
Right, we're going, well, I didn't get that far yet. For what you have listed in the scoping document, the Planning Department and Department of Public Works, we're going to put down into interested agencies.
Sure.
Okay. Now...
They're there.
I'm moving them down to interested, they're involved.
I know, but they're there.
Yeah, but they need to remove them.
Yeah, so just remove them from the...
Yeah, yeah. We're going to put the FAA as an involved agency.
Do you need a per, do you need a permit from the FAA?
Well, Dennis?
So that was, that was one of the errors that I noted in our memo, so they are an interested agency, not involved.
So we're going to, going to add them into interested, okay. Now, in H2M memo, you have Village, Woodbury Village and Woodbury Town Board as interested, but also you have as involved agency. I believe they should only be interested agencies, right? Why do you have H2M, list them as both?
Our memo largely matches the positive declaration that was approved.
That's what I thought.
So within that, the agency circulation for involved agencies, that was the town of Woodbury and the village of Woodbury. So our memo just requests that the applicant match that within the scoping document.
And Madam Chair, if you recall, this was submitted prior to the...
Right, okay.
...POS DAC, so there was amendment, so we will amend it to be consistent with the POSDAC.
Perfect.
And we can coordinate with Dennis's office, H2M's office, to make sure that we have the correct...
The village, the village and the town should be interested agencies, not involved.
That's what I, okay, no problem. I just wanted to clarify that real quick. Yes? Is your mic on? There we go.
All right, can we add the Sheriff's Department? I think there aren't going to be Sheriff's Department, these be added, only because of not only the roadway that they police for the commons, but also, I think, don't they get involved?
No, New York State Police do the roads, not the Sheriff's Department.
I thought that they were back up to the...
The way that, the way it, my understanding from the way it works, inside Woodbury Common is the BID, which is the business district. They contract Woodbury Common with the town of Woodbury Police, which they get reimbursed, and that's added onto their sales tax as a separate item. That's within. On the state highway, it's the New York State Police. The Sheriff's Department does become involved when someone is arrested, and they have to transport them to jail. And at times, I know on the five or six major holidays, Woodbury Common can verify all that later on. The town of Woodbury brings in the Sheriff's Department for backup if need be with their dogs, I know it's on Black Friday. I'm not sure if that comes out of the BID or how that works. That's something that I know we can get answers from, from the police department.
But shouldn't they at least be interested?
We can include them, I mean, do you have a...
To the harm and including them, they do get involved there.
Okay, first, let me just say, although we're fine, and I can advise you as to what's involved and what's an interested agency, based upon the SICER regulations, it's more form over substance, because if anybody who gets a copy of this wants to comment, their comments are going to be considered equally by you, whether or not they're involved, bless you.
Bless you.
Involved or an interested agency. It's more form. Involved agency just means that they have a permitting power over the project in one form or another. Everybody else is an interested agency. The Sheriff's Department certainly has legal jurisdiction over all of the roads, including state roads. And so if you want to send it to them, you can identify them as an interested agency. It's up to you as to who you want to send it to from that list. The involved agency is just whoever has actual permitting authority in connection with their requested improvements.
I mean, if you want to request that they be as interested, we can put them there with the state police, but...
But I think that they should be.
Robert?
I think we could put an interested party.
Okay, we'll put them in.
Yep.
Board members, where do we want to start? I think in the last meeting, I mentioned about the first page with the Apple Court rest, address on there, and also it should say adopted by Village of Woodbury Planning Board. I'm just fussy that we're acknowledged as village. Do you want to go page by page, and we can all make a comment as we go along, if there's a, all right. Page 5, I'm going to start with the introduction. I'm just going to throw it out there, if anyone just stopped me, anyone have comments on page 5 from the board? Page 7?
Um, wait, on 6, sorry.
Too late, only kidding.
Under declaration. Doesn't it have to be the Village of Woodbury Planning Board?
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you. Oh, and I guess when you go through this document, at all locations, you're going to change the name of the pond?
I'll cross-check, yes.
Okay, proper spelling?
Yep.
And make sure it says Village.
Yes, and I'll cross-check.
And I guess within the Village of Woodbury is formed as within the town, yeah.
And then, I mean, Robin had brought up a point, but it's something that I had to on 1.2.2.
Yes, we'll address that comment.
Yep, to reference the parking garage. The declaration, as a result prior, I'm reading the last sentence, the bottom of 6. As a result, all prior approvals for the project site referenced the town of Woodbury or any of its officials, departments, boards, agencies, and the town of Woodbury code. We don't follow the town of Woodbury code, which is on...
That's what it's saying here, it's saying whenever it has been used as town of Woodbury code, we should be referring to as a village.
All right, just want to make sure that was, okay.
That's what it says.
And the Village of Woodbury code, or are they, all right. I just want to make sure that, because Robin did address that.
No, I think this is a proper sentence.
Okay.
It's basically saying that prior approvals at times involve the town of Woodbury, because there's a town of Woodbury Planning Board and other, and it references town codes. And what this is saying, that whenever those prior approvals reference town issues, they should really be, for somebody to look at it now presently, village code, village board, et cetera, village planning board.
Okay. Anyone else on page 7? 10? Rick, comment by Robin on the 3.2.3?
Well, Robin's comment was really for all of the mitigation measures.
Right.
I think it's actually appropriate to say if applicable, because there may be something in these general categories. Realize that this is just saying, this is what you need to study. When they study something, maybe they study it and there's no impact from the study, and therefore there's no mitigation to do if there's no impact. So I think it's appropriate, it doesn't narrow it down at all by saying if applicable. So I think it's appropriate the way it's phrased.
Board members, you're okay with that? I'm okay with that. Page 11? 12? Why do I have this highlighted? I'm looking at noise 3.5.2. Why do I have hotel generators and helicopter traffic to be discussed in terms of noise? How are we going to... When you say generators in here, you're not talking about the physical apparatus, you're talking about what it's going to generate? Just want to be clear.
What are you reading for now, Maria?
3.5.2, the last sentence, hotel generators and helicopter traffic.
Helicopter traffic, I know we're going to have to figure out how to work on that. Are you talking about physical generators, if the power goes out, or what it's going to generate?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I want to be clear about. So I guess we'll, I'm looking to see how we're going to explain to us how you're going to have it enclosed, because we, a couple of years ago, we had a large project that had several large generators, and we had them insulated. So just, well, just give us a, I just want to explain...
We can expand upon how we are going to address it in the DSEIS, in terms of noise mitigation.
Right, okay. Anyone else on page 12? And I just, air quality. And I understand the traffic, I get it, I live here as well. With the noise and air quality, with two hotels, one hotel, whatever you decide to go with, when you finally do plans, are the hotels there to, to generate less traffic so people stay overnight, one night, two nights, so there's less...
Yeah, well, of course, that testimony on, on the impetus of why we're proposing two, as opposed to one, or any other options.
I'm just, just, you know, just, I had it highlighted there, so I just want to make sure. Anyone else on page 12? I want to thank you on the second paragraph from the bottom, where it says that the analysis shall also prepare a corridor evaluation using the SECREO information and software. I'm, thank you for working on that, and that's going to include area projects that are...
Yes, we, I, we actually have our traffic engineer in attendance this evening, I could expand upon that.
Okay, so I'm just curious, so you're going to...
Yeah, if it's in here, then we're obviously going to accommodate.
Okay. Anyone else on page 13? 14? Chris?
Yeah, I guess before our conversation starts with John, because on 14, we start to list the intersections that we're going to request to be studied. And there are a number of other projects that are, are in the ground or getting ready to be approved. You have three in Curious Joel alone on Acres Road. You have 471 multifamily residential unit in 16 buildings, 543 multifamily residential unit in 42 buildings. You have another building that is going up on 105, another multi-tenant housing. There is also a statement from the Curious Joel Addiction Impact Statement that states vehicle trips generated to and from the adduction areas during... vehicle trips generated to and from the annexation areas during commuter routes would be toward the Village Business District endpoint south, including railroad station and the thruway. I think we need to, for the sake of everybody, because of the expanding residential area, I guess it's west, north, northwest of us, push the intersections back that we're going to look at and their potential impact feeding into this arterial area. Because when you think about it, everybody coming from that area, there's really no other way to get to the thruway, unless they go up through Blooming Grove, get on 17, 20817, and come down the other way, which I don't know who's going to want to, who's going to want to do that. Plus, this board has also received paperwork for two new schools on Inninger Road.
Which we haven't even looked at yet.
No.
I don't want, I don't want the rest, the people in the room to panic right now. We just received that. We haven't even given reports yet. Evergreen is down by...
You got it. Got it. I think all those are appropriate. And basically, what I would look at, there are two primary roads that are going to feed this area. And that would be, let's say, lock and drive, because you can go 105 and then come down on Dunbar and Inniger to get back into this area. And you may also want to look at what happens if they come back via town hall and come south on 32. So I think the evaluation of the housing that you talked about would be reasonable to include. Just looking at the numbers, it's about 2,000 plus or minus residents, the approved projects.
Right.
The fact that you have the annexation and no one knows what that could be, I would rather not, because if you include it in this project and you include X number of units in that annexation, and then evaluate it, and then all of a sudden they come back in later with, you look at the impact of it, you've already addressed it, assuming you approve this project. Okay? Assume it. So my suggestion is only go with what's on the books now. You may want to put a slight surcharge, another 500 units, 1,000 units, and then just to see what that would be on the roadways, looking at those roadways. In addition to the other projects, for example, Shops at Woodbury that we talked about that's been approved, we talked about, as Stu mentioned, the mixed use up at Strada, right? And then, the question is, how do you want to handle the gardens, since it was previously in, and that would be the next one that they would be in? And the problem with the gardens is the fact is that when the state was doing theoretically, the state, when they were doing their design, the EIS for the interchange, did include some type of development, it may have been called a different name, but it did include development to that point. So theoretically, it's in the interchange design numbers already. So you can also include that as part of, quote, approve or projects under review.
Thank you.
And I think we should include it all. I know you was stating, you know, including like a 500 home car buffer. The consultants for the rezoning of KJ Palm Tree have actually stated that 4,400 multiple family units could be built on that newly rezoned land.
All right. The trouble though, Chris, is that, taking that to its logical conclusion, you would then have to do an analysis of a full build-out of every vacant land and try to assess a traffic impact to it. And that's not really what Saker is there for. It's, I think that goes into the area of speculation as to what might, what development might be there. I think what Saker guidance gives you is that you should have projects that are underway or under the approval process, and those are the ones that you have to study. Because to do something else would eventually mean that they would have to study every vacant land in Orange County that may come through here, which is not really where the Saker Guidance documents direct you.
But in that vein, Chris, with the roads, you have Route 32 and Estrada. You should probably also include, it's across the street, it's Route 32 in Edgewood. Estrada's here, on the west side is Edgewood. And the reason why I'm saying that, and that brings a good point up, I would probably take it a step back to Rose Lawn, because what's been happening, people are cutting from 105 down to Rose Lawn to beat that light out on 105. So I would suggest including Route 32 and Rose Lawn. County Route 105, I'm not sure. I'm on the fence on that one, but also, but definitely include Edgewood. I don't know if you should say Estrada and Edgewood, because there, one's on east side, one's on the west side.
Okay. So we'll look at Estrada and Edgewood, okay?
Yep, Estrada and Edgewood, because they're on, and I would definitely...
32.
Rose Lawn and Route 32.
And the other one you mentioned, Maria, the other?
Route 32 and Rose Lawn. R-O-S-E-L-A-W-N, Rose Lawn. Because lately, I've been noticing, 7 o'clock in the morning, they've been, Rose Lawn and Edgewood have been using as cut-throughs.
And although it hasn't been before us, the proposed...
Senior housing?
Hotel, well, the proposed hotel at Turner.
Well, there's two. There's two separate lots.
Well, there's two separate lots there, but I mean, in that area.
Yeah.
Route 32 and Turner.
See, you also have, well, Estrada will include the Aon Hotel that was approved.
Right.
Then you have Turner. There was at the time, two separate applications, well, applications pre-app meetings.
Right.
But like Rick said, it's vacant land.
Was it the same hotel, just where?
No, two separate, it's two separate entities. As Rick says, we can't put every piece of land on there and it's vacant. So right now, they're not active. But the one on Inniger, we just received an application, but we haven't even looked at it.
But if you have an application pending, then it'd be appropriate to include that if you think it's a project that has some significant... I mean, there's lots of projects that may be before you that, in the scheme of the study, and you'd have to ask John for his opinion on it, but don't really rise to the level of need for study because it's de minimis in the scheme of things. But John can advise you whether a particular project ought to be studied from a traffic point of view.
I want to enter that question.
If it's a relatively small project, most of those projects are covered under the growth that we're going to, the background growth that we're going to apply. So we're looking at the other major projects that would have almost a life of their own, so to speak. And that's what we're talking about from Curious Joel, the residential, the high-density residential projects, as well as the Shops at Woodbury.
And Robin mentioned, because I have in my notes here, about the detailed info for ingress and egress. I know once Exit 131 project is supposedly completed by the beginning of November of this year, you'll be able to have a better idea of how the traffic is coming. And those of us who have been following that particular project, it's going to be interesting, to say the least. And just for a side note, while traveling south, I was actually in a diversion diamond. It was incredibly easy. And it was a major highway and major shopping center going around. It was like, boom. It was, it worked well down there.
It looks more confusing than it actually is, because we're focused on all the different movements. In fact, we're traveling, we're only traveling on the right.
Right. It was a very interesting concept, and I didn't have a problem with it, but then again. Sandy?
While you were talking about that, the traffic impact study as well, I think the applicant has said you are not making any accommodations for employee parking, correct?
What was that, Sandy? I couldn't hear that.
What do you mean about employee parking?
I know, I know when they appeared, it was asked about, is any of these 2,100 parking spaces going to be for employees? And we were told no. So you're still not, there's still no employee parking, correct?
No, I mean, to clarify, I believe it was employee designated parking. I mean, if, just by, just by the general nature of our, the assumed ratio of 7.3 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of leasable area, employees are included in that count. I could, I believe, and our general manager is here, all but 14 days out of the year, employees park on our site.
All employees?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So just to, so to say that we don't have employee parking and we don't permit employee, that's just not a factual statement.
Okay. But with this expansion, it's been reported that it'll bring in 1,000 new employees?
That, that is what our economic study has said, yes.
Okay. So in this plan, is there accommodation for that additional 1,000 employees?
That would be, according to your code requirement, well, specific to Woodbury Common, the 7.3 would assume, yes, that that includes employees.
I have to ask clarification there. Is 1,000 employees on-site at any one time? Or is it 1,000 employees that will be hired as part of, over a 24/7 basis?
These are, according to the economic analysis, which we kind of got a jump on, which we are expecting it to be part of the secret, so you guys will see this. It was 998 full and part-time jobs would be created at Woodbury Common. Now, Woodbury Common operates longer than eight hours a day, so you'd assume that there are multiple shifts in there. You would assume that, you know, there's busier times than others. So yes, that, the economics you guys will all see, but it's not 1,000 at one particular time.
Okay. No, the reason I'm asking is because, doesn't that have to be part of the traffic?
Well, what happens is the fact is that, I think, what I've heard from the comments from the board and from here, it would be beneficial if, as part of the document, there could be a narrative as to the onsite parking and traffic management for four periods a year. A typical weekday, a typical weekend, a holiday weekday, and a holiday weekend. Including where, for example, I'm assuming like on a holiday weekend, like Black Friday, the employees are going to be asked to park off-site. I'm assuming that. I may be wrong, I may be right, whatever the case may be. Where would the buses be parked? And I think that all came out of the discussion today, so if a narrative was performed for very specific time periods, typical, it would be, it would give both the board, myself, and the public a better understanding of how the Woodbury Commons operates.
Like this coming weekend, your Memorial Day weekend is Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. I know for a fact, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, it's off-site parking for employees. In your narrative, maybe you can, with the manager, you can put in there the operations of the bus times, which is, I think, like 4:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., which is a constant going back and forth with the buses to the train station. And I know a couple of buses sit up on the top road. Something like that for the board members and the public, that would probably be more helpful. And the buses usually, I think, stay at the train station. I'm not sure what the dynamics are of that whole scenario.
We can certainly provide that detail. One comment to Mr. Collins about his four periods. It also ties into, in your comment letter regarding the scoping document, there's really a peak and non-peak, if you want to look. I mean, a holiday is a holiday, whether it's a weekday, whether it's a weekend. Saturday, Sunday, weekends.
When I was talking about the holidays, I was talking about basically, if I take the Thanksgiving to Christmas period, the weekday during that particular, like a Wednesday or a Thursday during that time period versus a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday during that time period. I agree with you, a holiday is a holiday, whether it occurs on Memorial Day or Labor Day, whatever the case may be. Myself, I stay away.
But also, could I ask, how many employees actually take advantage of the off-site parking, or they just get dropped off and picked up? Is there any, do you have any handle on that number?
Or you can get it to us?
Yeah, I mean, for purposes of the scoping document, we're prepared to include a section as requested, that we will include this information.
Right.
At this point, we haven't yet been gathering the information.
No.
But we will have it as a narrative to include in the scoping document.
I mean, if it was like, 1% get dropped off, I can't see that affecting the flow on 32, but if 50% of the...
No, I see where you're going.
Okay.
And we'll have that, based upon what Mr. Collins has indicated, we will have that as another section in the scoping document to provide the description of parking for employees, along with busing, back and forth operations, and so forth.
And if you can identify, I think it's five top holidays? I know President's Day, Memorial Day, Thanksgiving, Columbus Day Weekend. I know there's top five, if you can acknowledge those for the board.
Not a problem.
Did I miss one of them?
We'll make sure they're all over there.
Okay.
And I have one other question on that page on 14. Under number one, the net, when it says results of construction of net 164,0626 square feet. But on page six, it says net of 159,0526. I know it's only 5,000 square feet, but...
We'll correct that.
Okay. That, it's supposed to be the same number?
It will be, yes.
Okay.
It's 159.
Okay.
All right. So, excuse me. Can I move on to page 15? Oh, we did 15.
We did 15.
All right, so 16. Mitigation measures, 3.8.6. The applicant shall also provide an emergency service access plan. I'm presuming that you're going to be expanding on the plan that we've had for the last...
My apologies, I did not hear what section you were...
Page 16.
3.8.6.
Okay. Go ahead.
The applicant shall also provide an emergency services access plan. I presume, because it's been there for so long, that there is a plan, but you're going to expand on it.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that...
Based on what we're proposing.
We're not creating a new, we're just expanding on the old.
Correct.
Okay.
Based on the, what we are proposing in terms of the additional improvements.
Okay. Anyone on, anyone else on page 16?
Yeah, under 3.9.2. I think helipad should be added to that list. Applicant shall specifically examine the visual impact.
Okay. I get, yeah.
Are you talking about the visual impact of the helicopter flying, or the pad itself?
Well, the pad, I don't know, you know, are there going to be, is it going to be cordoned off in some special way? Is there going to be any built-up structure, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have that on our, on our plans and description, well, not description, but elevation and so forth of the, of what's proposed.
I know it's not in this particular section for visual resources, but a helipad.
Isn't that...
I'm talking about, I'm going to bring something else up.
Oh, okay.
It's not in that. With a helipad, I know we heard comments tonight, this is to be used for shoppers that want to come up to shop. And will it be accessible to emergency services if it goes in, if they need to have a landing zone?
We're happy to have all discussions regarding the helipad with the planning board, and how best to integrate it into the plan.
Okay. So somewhere within, maybe not this document, maybe in, as we go along further on, give us an explanation, a narrative of what the use and...
Well, the narrative on the use should be in this document, should be in the SDI, EIS.
Yeah. I'm not sure where to put that in, but...
Well, they're going to describe the use, and they should address whether or not it's going to include or exclude emergency service, et cetera. And they'll study that impact.
Scheduled service.
Scheduled service, right.
I'm sorry.
Scheduled service or unscheduled service or both?
It's not going to be like a, like the buses have a set schedule.
I, yeah, I listen.
Yeah. Anyone else on page 16?
3.9. 3.2, I know it says they'll provide visual, based, illustration with phase time. If it possibly can include a photo representation of the new parking deck with the photo cells on top of it, and what that's going to look like in the surrounding area. Because I know you guys are in the hole, but that's going to be... Because I know you guys are in the hall, but that's going to be above where you guys are now, and I think people would like to...
He's showing it to you already.
Yes, we will. We will.
And it will be even more specific come time for the actual application process.
With, with better resolution.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else at page 16? 17. Utilities, 18.
18, 3.12.2. Halfway through the paragraph, applicant shall provide details of proposed hotels, facilities, i.e., conference rooms, entertainment facilities. What, what are, what do you have in mind for entertainment facilities?
That's what's going to be set forth here.
Yes, that's, we'll, we'll provide that information in the EIS.
They're going to expand on it, that's why they're...
No, I know, but, okay.
And, and they're going to, for everything that they're going to provide, as to what they're going to be doing, entertainment and otherwise, they also will have to show the mitigation factors necessary to offset whatever those things are. And what will happen is that, when they study that and propose mitigations, and they come out with the supplemental draft environmental impact statement, you'll be able to comment and say, for instance, well, no, those, you haven't given good enough impacts, I mean, mitigation measures, or we think that there are going to be greater impacts that you are, and you would have the potential to then require additional studies at that point in time in the FEIS.
Because it was entertainment facilities, et cetera.
We're going to be getting at least a six-inch document, once this, at least, you're looking at, I don't, anyone on this board, they haven't been here, would have, you're going to get at least minimum two six-inch documents, if not three. And one of them is probably going to be solely for traffic. Trust me.
No, I'm...
We're going to be killing a few trees.
Well, I didn't mean that.
I know, but that's what happens. Anyone else on 18?
3.13.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to go with the current project site taxes provided to each taxing...
And only, because I don't know where else would fit in, a couple members of the public question tonight, and I tend to use them, I'd like to see an analysis of the utilization of our police resources, how much out of the total time, you know, man-hours they're using, overtime they're, just how much of their police, our police resources are actually...
So you want to see the bid?
Yes. And I want to see if the bid actually covers the resources that are being used.
The bid is solely, Chief, I'm going to put you on the spot real quick. The BID, that's solely for the police coverage, the vehicles, the dispatching, the canines. It doesn't include court, right?
It does, when they go to court.
Okay, when they go to court.
When they go to court, when it's on, and she, or Randy, they, it was all initiated on the town, from the FICA, social security, the retired, and everything else that they put into the court also.
Okay. I didn't know...
So for court, court staff is separate, this is solely for the police, and like, like the chief said, they do their FICA, the social security, the pension? Not the pension, they pay for everything. And they do, I'm not sure, I haven't been, I haven't seen the bid in a while, but they, it's also police vehicles, the canines, we have two, I think they're taking care of both of them now. The police, they, if I'm not mistaken, you'll tell us how much it is. I'm not going to throw a figure out there, I know what it is, but...
Who put all that information?
Perfect.
Excuse me, can I state it?
Madam Chairman, just...
Did he say the court staff is, or is not?
It's when the police officer has to go to the court. It's not court staff, it's the police, when they respond to go to court.
So that's...
Okay.
Rick, or Stu, who am I going to?
Well, just one, one thing, because I know you're trying to deal with the board comments, but this is, we had a whole bunch of comments in there, and this is one of the places, though, where I think it's particularly important that the scope reflect the cost. It's always, you know, the socioeconomic impacts are one thing, and the revenue is another thing, but the costs, the costs related to the revenue, that's part of what you're talking about. And that's what's not in this draft scope.
And that was a point made in your report.
Your report, which you're going to...
So you have that, and I, I just hope that everybody will sort of consider what they think is important in there, in our memo, or Dennis's memo, as well as the public's memo.
Madam Chair, when you're done going through this, I just want to have a comment on the, on the reports.
Okay. Rick, did you have something?
Yeah, I want to make a comment with respect to the purely economic impacts. And although you could ask them to provide information on the economic impacts, both positive and negative with respect to that, the SEACR regulations and guidance, or the SEACR guidance documents, and the courts have made very clear that you can, that the purely economic impacts are not environmental impacts. And therefore, you cannot consider that, in fact, not only this project, any project, for some reason it was an economic drain that might raise taxes, or that it would be adverse to property values, or other economic impacts. You can't take that into consideration in saying, well, that's a negative impact, and we're not, you can't mitigate it, and therefore, we're not going to approve the project. People may say, that's a good thing, that's a bad thing. But regardless, that's what you're guided by, is both the DEC guidance documents, as well as the court, say that that cannot be considered. In fact, they say that the extent that you can consider economic impacts, purely economic impacts, is if it's in the favor of the applicant, and the applicant, which is not saying it in this case, and every applicant that would would be foolish, the applicant would say, well, we provide such economic benefits that you should give us a break on the environmental impacts that we have. Right? That's the only balance that you can do. You can't say that this is a terrible balance of economic, purely economic issues to us, therefore, this is something that your project isn't going to go forward. You can't do that.
With that being said, anything else on page 18? 19?
I would like to make a comment on 19.
Yes, sir.
Because as I, on 5.0 alternatives, and Stu raises this in his memo. And I think, except for this point, what I said before is that you are now have to direct the applicant at your future meeting of what needs to be changed in the scope, and therefore, what they need to study in the environmental impact statement. Alternatives, however, is not something you dictate to the applicant. The applicant has to come up with it. However, as Stu said, and I researched it further while we were here, is that the alternatives cannot be stated in such a general way as you have stated here. And I'll reference you page 113 of the 2019 SEACR handbook. And what it says is that the scope has to include a list of reasonable alternatives. And they actually give you an example of the kind of specificity that you need to put in there and don't need to put in there. So I would ask you to be guided by that, and for you to come up with some reasonable alternatives, other than the no-action alternative, and actually put it forth in the scope, so that the board can react to that, and maybe say, well, we want you to do something differently with respect to that.
Understood.
Can I ask a question about the drop-off? Has the, maybe Dave, you can answer this better. The, do you see a major increase in Uber Lyft taxi service to the Commons now versus two years ago?
We had, we had some Uber.
You might want to use the microphone.
David, David Mistrada. There is some Uber that's coming to the center. Really hasn't been significant over the last couple of years, it does come. Some people do take Uber. The majority of people, especially people from New York, still take the bus services.
We may want to consider, as that becomes more popular, looking at different pickup locations onsite. And then the next question is, will ultimately affect the impact of, on parking, the amount of parking required? Instead of a seven index, it may be a six. So one of the suggestions is, maybe we don't build a net of 2,100. Maybe we look at building 1,100 as an alternate. That's all I can.
Along, along those lines, and I don't, frequent Woodbury Commons, I don't know. Do you have, for the electric cars, do you have the plug-in?
Charging stations?
The charging stations?
Yes, they do.
They're in the parking garage.
Okay. So they are, are they also going to be in the new parking garage?
I see everybody back away from the mic.
Well, this, if I may, just so that it's for the record, I, and I'm going to reiterate this again, the reason why I'm so aware of what's going on at the Commons, I've worked down there for six years, I have no association at all with Simon or the affiliates. But with the Commons, I know you're going to come back with us with more detailed plans and what's going to be in the, in the parking and everything, but it's a good question about additional electric, because it is a way of...
As you know, we can't commit to providing that information at this point, but as we flesh it out further, we'll have an idea of, you know, if, how many more, where they're going, the location, whether they're Tesla, whether they're another company, and so forth.
Anything else on 19? Page 20. Okay. Now, I'm just going to go real quick, I'm going to go back on, Tom Powell mentioned about somewhere, we'll have to look at protection of residents within the immediate area when the, when traffic is bad for the ma, five major holidays, so that, just to take a look at it, he talked about it, just somehow come back with an answer with that. I know there's a concern about the helicopter with the school across the street. Do you have any idea where the location might be, just so that, I'm not holding you to it, I'm just wondering where it might be, as a planning board?
We've, we've had multiple considerations at this point, so...
All right. Just curious, that's all. And septic, that's another one, that's another big issue. I know you're going to be talking about that, and as Mr. Kelly spoke, Jim Kelly spoke earlier. With the sewer, I'm sure you're going to explain how it's impacted with the county, and how you, Woodbury Common has their allotment and whatnot, so that, and I understand where he's coming from with that. In regards to the train, I know this has been mentioned, and I know there's been several vocal comments about it outside of this room. Woodbury Common is not putting in a connection to the train station, correct? This is not part of your plan that's being proposed before us?
That scope is not included in this project.
Okay. So if, if MTA wants to do it, that's their burden to bear?
Any application related to a new train station located at Woodbury Common, would the applicant, the owner of the rail, and the property is actually Norfolk Southern, MTA operates that through a lease. We would maybe be a joint applicant, but it would primarily be handled by the MTA.
So it won't be an alternative?
Probably not.
No, I don't think it's planned to be an alternative for this application.
It's not an alternative. I know it was brought up about the Central Valley Post Office, I don't know how they handle that, but I've, I've never heard of any problems. Traditional projects, I think that, I'm missing somebody's comment. I think that was Robyn's, I wrote inside. So I, I think...
Jim Kelly.
Hmm? Mr. Jim Kelly, he talked about the sewer. Yeah. All right. So with all that being said, the board feel we have enough comments from the public and from us, and from the consultants, that the applicant can go back and prepare the...
Well, we have the written...
Well, the written comments, but they can start working on...
And that was, you took the words out of my head, Madam Chair. I wanted to just expand upon the reports of the professionals. Some of the comments were formatting, some of them were just corrections, consistency throughout the document. So if, you know, if it pleases the board, we can get going on those until we await your, your comments, after you receive a final written comment from the, from the public.
Okay.
When will we, the board, be able to have a transcript?
I will talk to my court reporter post-meeting and get a more firm date, unless she wants to answer that now, but I don't think so.
Next week?
She knows I'm going to ask for it as soon as possible.
Today is, today is Wednesday, we have a holiday weekend, so maybe Tuesday, Wednesday next week?
Is that okay? As long as you can do it.
Is that good for you, Rick?
It's what's good for the board. I mean, you want to have these comments, because you haven't taken notes on what everybody said, in order to include in your comments as far as directive to them at the next meeting.
And I can attest, having worked with Allison for years, she will get it to me as soon as possible, and I will get it to you guys once I receive it.
And I do want to just make one other comment with respect to the comments that are made. Because there are several comments that were made that were just generally opposed to Woodbury Common and its expansion, et cetera, and I understand those. And there will be opportunity for people to have those comments heard in a manner that can be responsive after the environmental impact statement comes out, and there'll be a public hearing on that. But just for the public, is that the board isn't necessarily ignoring those types of comments, but this is a very particularized document that the scoping session was about, and that's a scope for the environmental impact statement draft, and that it's just related to trying to say what they should study, not whether or not it should go forward, not whether or not it should be approved, or anything like that, that's not part of this process yet. We're just at the beginning of the review process in that sense. And so there were several comments tonight that will not be part of the board's direction to include in the scope, because they're really not relevant to the types of actions that simply must be studied, and then we'll wait for the, or the board will wait for the study before deciding how to act on that.
Anything else, Jennifer, did you want to...
I'm good, well said.
Okay. Board members, we're good?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you for your, taking your notes, I know we kept you busy. With all that being said, we don't have any housekeeping that we have to take care of, I'm going to offer a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
And everyone have a safe holiday weekend.
You too. Thank you.
And...